Herman?
Here.
Kaiser?
Here.
Maple?
Here.
Kankowski?
Here.
Calandra Zebra?
Here.
Kelly Zebra?
Here.
Student rep Addison? All present for Hanson.
Yeah, and he did text me saying he was running a little late.
Oh.
So he'll be joining us. Okay, item three, Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Russia, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, moving on to, and for approval of the agenda, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Kelly's your second?
I'll second.
The second by Amy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item five, Approval of the Minutes. Five A is the Special Board of Education meeting, January fifteenth, twenty twenty four. If there are no corrections, I would seek a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
We have a motion by Amy, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Calandra. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item five B, The Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes from January fifteenth, twenty twenty four. I would seek a motion if there are no corrections.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Kevin.
Yes.
A second by Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. And the last is five C was the Special Board of Education meeting from February sixth, twenty twenty four. I would seek a motion if there are no corrections.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from January sixth.
Okay, we have a motion by Kelly, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Jessica. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item six is discussion and possible decision on the grant or deny petition to alter school district boundaries.
So the month of February, uh, that's the opportunity for folks across Wisconsin to petition, uh, to look at, uh, moving to a different school district. Um, so, uh, the paperwork was filled out, uh, per, um, statutes, uh, by Mr. and Ms. Seibert, um, asking, uh, the district, uh, to secede, uh, from the Mozeni District, uh, to move towards or to move into the Marathon School District. So, uh, that's, uh, the official business here in front of the board this evening.
Okay, is there any questions? If not, I would seek a motion to either grant or deny the petition.
Well, I think possibly, Rob, could you explain what they're really looking to do here?
Sure, so they're looking to, um, i- in effect, join the Marathon School District, have their, their location, their property, which does not directly, uh, join the Marathon School District, um, but to, in fact, it'd be an island.
So they live in the Mozeni School Districts, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so they want to, to be, I don't know if the word annexed or whatever, approved to be, and we as a board can do that?
We as the bo- you as the board can approve or deny that. So similarly, you, you could, um, if somebody from Marathon living in, in an island within, well within the boundaries of the Marathon District, could approve that. Um, however, of course, Marathon School District would most likely, well, I don't want to say for the Marathon District, but they would have to, there's gotta be a double approval. There's gotta be, uh.
That's what I was looking for, yes.
Yep. Is that all?
Yes.
Okay.
So if that was approved, then when the House goes to sell, then those people would not be in the Mozeni School District?
Correct, right?
Yes, correct.
Correct.
Okay, so, um, again, I-
And the tax money then for those people would go directly to Marathon? School District? I would say.
Yes.
Okay. And is that property borderline? So there's no other?
It's off Highway KK.
It's an island, it's not, uh, directly adjacent to the Marathon School District.
But it's on the wrong side of KK for it to be even remotely, well-
Yeah, probably closer to Wausau.
To be closer, yes.
Wausau.
Or even Everest if you could go across the river, right? But, um-
Yes, it would be across the river.
It could be, right?
Correct.
I don't know how that part works, but it does not, uh, it does not, uh, but, or, join the, the Marathon Districts at all.
Correct.
Correct.
Does, do we know the main reasoning, Jessica?
Uh, just the information here, uh, I, I haven't, the, the tit, uh, the, either Kurt or Melissa haven't, I haven't, s- they haven't reached out to talk to me, to give reasons, they've certainly reached out to fill out the paperwork to bring, bring to you this evening.
I'll make a motion to deny the request.
Okay, we have, we have a motion by Kevin and, uh, sorry, who, second name? Okay, Megan. Megan. To deny the petition. Further discussion and/or questions?
I'd just like to reiterate, I've been on the board seventeen years now, we never had this. You know what I mean, so?
Yeah.
It's kinda, yeah, it's kinda something, yeah.
Well, and I, just that, in the school climate for every school, I can't in good faith to the Mozeni taxpayers let someone leave when, you know, we're hurting for funds for our own schools and making cuts and, you know, I just can't, nothing personal against them or anything, but, uh, we, we need every dollar we can get.
So keep in mind, they can appeal our decision and go to the DPI.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
No, good to know.
Alright, so we do have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Okay, thank you.
Item seven, Student Board Report.
Good evening, everyone. Recently at Mozeni High, we celebrated Valentine's Day. The FCC LA sold heart cookies throughout the day for students assigned to their Valentines. All of the money raised will go to the No Good Hungary. Also, the FCC LA opened a new location of the motif, where students can go to find used clothes, school supplies, hygiene products, and so much more. The motif was originally located in a small hallway and now is right next door in a beautiful room with a freshly painted mural for the students to enjoy. It is now a cozy environment that the FCC LA worked so hard to create for our school. In other clubs, the Student Senate recently hosted a snowball dance. It was a smaller dance, but still had a great energy and fun decorations to enjoy. We had a lot of students help out setting up decorations, and many chose to stay until the end of the dance and some even got to karaoke with the DJ. On February fourteenth, all of the juniors gathered in the auditorium to set up their accounts for the ACT. With only a few weeks left, the school wants to make sure every student taking the test is prepared to perform at the best of their ability. Lastly, I'd like to address the event of evacuation from the school on February first. A majority of the students thought it was handled well and handled calmly. On behalf of the student body, I'd like to thank the Police Department, um, our school administration, and everyone else involved with the safety of the students. I would also like to thank the teachers for keeping the students safe, calm, and organized during the whole process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, Special Presentation. Eight A, Discussion and Possible Decision on Elementary School Staff with 4K Early Childhood Survey Results.
Sure, so administration, um, in particular, Michelle, Jolynn, and I, um, have been working, looking at our early childhood 4K model, and to that end, uh, Ms. Schmidt is here this evening to talk about, uh, that survey. And also, this is our special spotlight presentation, all rolled up into one.
Yes, yes. Hello, um, thanks, thanks for having us, um, having me here tonight to update you on 4K. We thought that, um, in conversation on what is most relevant and some of the things that we're really focusing on, that 4K really stood out. Um, so I wanna update the, the board a, a little bit on kinda where we're at currently. Um, we also, um, had an in-person open house and where we're currently at so far with enrollment. Um, and then we also, um, administered a community survey, so I'll touch base on those results, and then our future goals, um, i- in relationship to that survey. So, um, with that being said, um, just to touch briefly, um, just to get everybody kind of in, on the same page with where we're currently at, we do have a combination of community and school-based sites. So we have, um, currently classes being held at Mozeni Preschool, um, at Mozeni Elementary School, at Storybook Kids, and then, um, our check center, um, for Head Start. So those are our four locations where we have 4K happening. Um, currently, our schedule is run Monday through Thursday. We do have AM and PM classes available, and, uh, we have wraparound care option currently at Storybook Kids. Um, our curriculum, we do, um, we just adopted a, a brand-new resource this year called Pre-K on My Way, which is really a comprehensive resource that, um, includes all of the subjects, reading, math, science, social studies, with literacy as really kind of the, um, the, the key piece that pulls it all together. Um, it is play-based, which is really important to our teachers, so that's part of, um, how that curriculum is designed, and so far, that's going really well. Um, the teachers have worked collaboratively, kinda step-by-step on, um, uh, rolling this out, and so far, it's been, it's been successful. So, that's where we're at with curriculum. Um, we held, uh, an open house in person, which we were really excited about. This is the first time since COVID that we were able to actually have that in-person open house. This was a thing before that, and, um, this is kind of our first year bringing it back, and it was very successful. We had all of our, um, sites, uh, open, um, on the same evening from five to seven, and, um, we did reschedule that, kinda due to our events, and so we had it on February eighth. Um, but we opened it up at all of our sites, we, um, advertised it with this postcard that went out. Um, we kind of used it as a twofold, where we were, um, advertising that we have this open house, as well as encouraging, um, the community to take our survey. So that was our goal when this mailing went out. Um, the open house was highly attended, we had thirty-five to forty people at each site, it was, it was pretty busy. Um, I'm, kind of went around to each of the sites, and there was families study. So it was really, uh, I feel like, well-received. A lot of families who went to multiple sites, uh, because at each site, we encouraged them to check out all locations. Um, because each location, although we have the same curriculum and resources, really has their own unique, um, special qualities about each site. So families got a chance to see it in person, meet teachers, um, and just kinda see where their child could potentially attend 4K. So it was very, very positive. Um, and then we opened up enrollment, um, and, uh, just to kinda share where we're at with that, uh, we opened that up, um, well, on the twelfth, our site preference form kinda opened up to get an idea of, uh, where families, um, would potentially like their child to attend, but also like AM, PM, um, childcare needs. Um, we also put on our survey, um, like transportation, just other special needs that their child may have, to get a better understanding. Um, that site preference form is a little bit different than it had been in the past. Um, it's not necessarily first come, first served, we're, we're looking at transportation, we're looking at all of the sites and the needs, and then we'll be making classes based upon that. But it was, it's really exciting to share, last year, I looked back at where we were at when we opened this up, and on, uh, February twenty-eighth of last year, we had twenty people who enrolled. This year, we have seventy. So, just at this time, and we're still like in the, the thick of the enrollment. So that's pretty exciting, um, that we are up that much from where we were last year at this time. So, something to celebrate, I feel like, with getting the word out and things happening, so. Um, on, on top of that, we did a community survey, so, um, the board had, um, expressed that this is something we wanna know, like what is our community looking for in a 4K program? So, um, we designed a community survey, um, that we, um, shared out via that postcard that you saw, so that went out to everybody who, um, receives the link. So it was mailed out, and then it was also emailed via like our Skyward to all of our families, and then social media, uh, from, uh, Mozeni Elementary, but also our other child, our, our 4K sites, put that on their social media, um, and we, um, shared that in lots of different ways. Um, uh, for the survey, a hundred and three people completed the survey, so that's where we're at. Um, the questions that were addressed, we tried to touch on kind of the main pieces of our, our program. So we had, um, information on our site locations, um, curriculum, our schedule, transportation, food ser- services, and childcare. Um, we used it a little bit as an educational tool, as well as trying to get an idea of what the families want. Um, looking back at how things are worded, um, I feel like the schedule might have been maybe a little bit misleading, and, um, it wasn't intentional, but we had an example of like a half-day schedule and a full-day schedule. Um, but with the full-day schedule, if we looked at doing full day, we would need to do like an every other day, and I don't feel like that was communicated as well as it should have been. In looking back at it, it was like full day and half-days. If a parent could have full day, every day, all day, of course, that's what they want, right? So, um, i- in, in hindsight, kinda looking back, I wish that would have been worded a little bit differently. So when you're looking at the survey results, I just want everybody to keep that in mind, uh, because I feel like that could be slightly skewed in, in, in what we're seeing, so. Um, but we did get a lot of good feedback. Um, so just to kinda share, we, we kinda asked like what's working and what's meeting your needs, and then what's not meeting your needs about our program. And so you can see, they like the different sites, I feel like that shines through, that we wanna continue those community partnerships. Um, but y- you can also see kind of some of the things that maybe are lower on the, on the scale here. So, um, childcare, uh, was, was one, and we'll talk about that and kind of not meeting our needs. Um, schedule kind of around that sixty-four percent said it was meeting their needs. Um, curriculum seems to be going well, and families seem to be, um, liking what's happening as far as the, the, the teaching and the learning that's happening within the classroom. Um, we just started meals this year, so that's kind of a new thing. Um, we're looking at how we can expand upon that, right now, it's for PM classes. There may be some opportunities to expand that a little bit, and even to some of our other sites, and working with Head Start on that as well. So, um, I feel like that's been positive, but that's definitely, um, something that will continue to grow in. So focusing on what we can do better, so what's not meeting our needs, you can really see what shines through here. Um, it is the schedule, and it is the childcare. Now, I feel like those two kinda go together, um, and with that being said, I do also feel like the scheduling may have been looked at like as either half-day or full-day, not necessarily the, every other. Um, but you can see that parents really, there is a need for that wraparound care piece, um, and all-day care for their child is really what this is, this is showing us. Um, so when you're looking at this, and we're looking at, well, what do we do? What are we gonna focus on? What are we going to improve? I, I included a few different comments, and there's a link to all the comments. I want you to be able to see all the results and be completely transparent with what, what everybody, um, expressed, because I think the feedback was really positive. But for everyone who says, "I love the half-day," then I have somebody saying, "I want full days." "I love the half-day, I want full days." So it's kinda like this back and forth, it's about half and half. You, you do see comments on both sides of it, um, and some really great, um, great feedback on the why behind it, too. Um, a lot of them like the, the wraparound care options that we have had with Storybook Kids, that's something that shined through in some of the comments. Um, and so you can see kind of like both of, both here, here's a few others that kinda just stood out. Um, some saying that we love that the, the half-day 4K is offered, it's a per- perfect amount of time um, for our four- and five-year-olds, um, and they said they knew families that did the full days, and every other day was not beneficial for the kids because it wasn't a consistent schedule, where you went every other. Um, and then you've got some that say it worked better having full days. So I feel like you've got kind of on, on both sides. Um, but really what shines out to us on like what to do next and kind of our future goals, um, we feel like we wanna continue promoting that, the, the enrollment, and at this point, we feel pretty committed to our current schedule. Um, the, the, what's developmentally, developmentally appropriate for our 4Kers, we really feel as, as a 4K team, it, it, the half-day is what's best for them. Um, but with that being said, childcare really shine through as this is a need, this is something that we need. And so with our, a survey that has went out to families, that childcare question is on there, um, like with the, with the site preference, and they can indicate if they need childcare, if they've secured childcare, or they are still looking for it. And so, we, we're working collaboratively with our partnerships and exploring the possibilities of additional childcare opportunities. Um, we've looked at a few different options, um, and I'm excited to share that with our current childcare provider through Storybook Kids and Mozeni Preschool. We've had some really great conversations about how we could potentially expand that, so we could actually keep it right here in our community. You know, when we look at childcare, maybe going outside the community and looking at other agencies, um, we, we don't want to, um, hurt the partnerships that we already have in place. And so, that's something that we feel, uh, pretty strongly about, and we're excited to explore, like if we do need more, how can we make that happen? So, we're looking at the sites that we have in Mozeni Preschool and Storybook, and we do feel like we have the space, and we could support the staffing, um, with, with those eight, um, with Storybook Kids and Mozeni Preschool to actually make that happen. So, our goal is to look at the numbers, and look at the needs, and really, um, make sure that we have a place for all kids who need childcare, and, and we're confident that we, that we can do that, so.
Right. I got a question.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, so when those seventy people signed up, they, they indicated their preference?
They do, there's like first, second, third choice of where they would like their child to attend, they can indicate if PM or AM work, work better. Um, and that's where there's also a piece on there, "I need childcare," or "I don't need childcare." Um, and then the transportation piece is on there, too, do they need transportation and do they not need transportation?
So of those, how many needed childcare?
Um, I don't have the exact numbers, um, I, I can definitely share that information, but that's our goal, is to go through, because this just opened up like a week ago.
Okay.
Um, so the goal is to go through that with a fine-tooth comb and how, what are our numbers, and what do we currently have available at Storybook Kids? And if we were to open an additional childcare classroom, potentially at Mozeni Preschool, um, what, what would that look like for numbers? And so, we, we need to make sure that we have the numbers to increase staffing, so that would work.
I did see on the survey, of the hundred and three that filled out, thirty-four, I think, stated that childcare was like a concern or an issue with them, so I don't know if that number means anything.
Um, so we should have hard numbers soon, but it's, it's a process right now, because they're currently, we're in the midst of enrolling, and so we need to do so, a few more promotional pieces to get that out there, and then, um, we'll really be working on, okay, are the current classrooms that we have for childcare, um, or the wraparound care options at Storybook enough, or do we need that additional space? Um, which very well could be, but it is dependent on the exact numbers, so.
So basically, if you made, we made the motion tonight to say, we're gonna move forward with offering the half-day, keeping that in place, but then offering parents who want the wraparound care, to keep that full day, every day, except of course for Fridays. Um, is that something, how, what would you need to do in order to get that ball rolling? Because once you offer it,
Right.
you, you can't take it back when you fill.
Yeah.
So what is that number, you'd almost have to have a cutoff point?
For, for how many we could accept?
Correct.
Correct.
Um, and I, and I do, I, and I, I know we put on like a motion, I don't know, what are your thoughts on that, Rob?
My perspective, we've invested, uh, a fair amount of time and energy on this endeavor, which I think is really exciting and good for the district, and really, we, we wanna get a feel from the board. We want that, is this something you want us to continue to, to build? And that, that being, community, school partnerships to have, uh, full-day, not 4K, but full-day care, combination of, um, wraparound services and educational services. So, we're really excited, but again, um, it, we really wanna bring that excitement to the board, and I think, uh, this will help, I believe, with, uh, the district numbers. I think the great work, uh, that Jolynn and others have done to promote the wonderful programs that we have, gauging how parents feel about different topics, um, transportation, and, uh, you know, we still need to do some work in terms of what, um, we have for recommendations for, uh, transportation. So really, the motion tonight, or the direction we'd like to see from the board is, yep, go get 'em, keep, keep moving forward with this project to build private, um, public partnerships for early childhood.
You just have a face, Kevin.
I know, I'm reading his body.
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm hearing everything I'm saying, everything you're saying. When I read the PowerPoint before the meeting,
Yep.
I would not have personally concluded that there, I, I know there is a childcare need, for sure, with, with many families. But I would not have concluded that the statement that, that's asked the question, "What parts of our 4K program meet the needs of your child?" Twenty-four percent said that it does. How do we know that those people need it at all? How do we know that those people need it at all? I mean, I think people, when they take surveys, they're compelled to answer every question.
Sure.
Right? So we could very well have a group of people who don't need it at all. And then the person who said, with some of the comments, the individual comments, you know, that their grand, their grand, the child grandparents generally provide the care, except when they were gone and then they needed it. And this is where we're, you're really going to be stretched, try to provide a solution that may not be utilized by every child, every time they're in school, right? And they're, they're, the kids are floating in and floating out. I mean, that's a challenge too.
I, I do think it boils down to the numbers. And I know, so the survey is one piece and that is the community's voice. And some of them have kids who are attending 4K and some don't. And there is, there was a question on the survey where we could just segregate the data and say, okay, this is, these are people who have current kids in 4K, these are people who don't. We wanted an overall community feel on what they felt that the needs were. But when we look at like our site preference form, which went out to, that's being blasted out now in all different avenues. So that families who are enrolling a 4K for this upcoming school year can indicate yea or nay for childcare, then we need to take those numbers. Do we have enough or do we need to add? An additional option, I guess, is the thought.
So those, the two, the two slides with the bar charts, right?
Yes.
One has 101 responses, okay? The other one that shows that 57% of the respondents, 34, said that childcare does not meet the needs of their child. But it's only 59 respondents. Which if we benchmarked it against the 101,
Sure.
we don't, we don't know why the other 42 people didn't even respond. I mean, maybe we do when you drill down into the rest of the survey. I mean, we've got a limited number at the board level ourselves. So to me, it seems that the 34 respondents is skewed on that childcare thing, on that childcare response. And maybe the schedule one too. But if you actually had 101 respondents to that, it brings it right back down to that same quote unquote, lower percentage of only about 20, well, 34% rather than 24. But it's a much lower number. And I'm a data guy. I haven't seen the entire survey and I don't want to. I'm just saying that we see a, we see a page that says 101 and the next one says 59. To me, there's a disconnect. That's all.
But additionally, what vehicles were used to disseminate the survey? Did it go out, was there a target audience? Was it mailed? Was it emailed? So it was, it was mailed to every single person in the community who receives the link. Everybody received a postcard in the entire community of Mozeney. And then also it went out via our Facebook, via our Skyward Family Access, via Facebook from our other sites as well. As well as like paper copies at all of our like sites, you know, to our families with like three-year-olds and such. So I feel like we pushed it out in a variety of ways. But it was mailed out to every, every person in the community. So theoretically, somebody could have taken it two or a few times then? I, it is anonymous, yeah. So it's, it's, there's really not, unfortunately, at least the survey that we designed, there's not a way for me to see who, who it's coming from.
But at least with the signups, we know what they want.
Correct, yes. So the signup will give us exact information. And honestly, with the signup, we might see as a 4K team that we have the childcare. Like we have what we need. And we felt pretty confident that we met those needs this year of the, of the people who needed wraparound care. But what I guess we're saying and we hope is just the support to continue. Like if we feel like we need, if we see we need more with numbers, we, we would like to look at exploring an additional option is the goal. With our current community partners.
With the board's blessing.
Okay, I'm sorry, Megan.
I, I have the, to piggyback off what Kevin said, my, I'll admit I didn't take the survey.
But I did.
I read your comment in here. Come on.
I, I tried to take it today though, just to see, and I only saw three questions. The first one, and perhaps this wasn't the same survey that was on the QR code, I don't know. This is just one that I had shared on Facebook and I went back today to actually say, oh, what were those questions? And it still came up. And it said, the first question was about if you had, will have, or opted out a child in our program. And then two and three, I felt were redundant, if I was reading them right. Two was what parts meet your needs? And three was what parts don't meet your needs? Which I felt like whatever I didn't select for two was your answer to three. And so I thought maybe then the same thing when I was looking further, combing through that data and thinking, well, that's a bit confusing because then it's, it's actually not lining up, you know? And so the one thing that I thought though, survey aside, that according to that data, 50% of people said the schedule does not meet their needs. And 60% said childcare does not meet their needs, which confirms what we all already suspected. So then I was trying to gauge, did you ask, perhaps the survey was more in depth than the one I clicked on today? But I was trying to think, okay, what about a rearrangement? If you, it would have been nice to see if you could have said, you know, if we did a full day at the elementary school and packed, you know, now you have those empty classrooms down, you know, in the basement or whatever, those empty rooms that you, where you guys, if we packed full day there because you already have lunch. You already have the staff and, and the room to have lunch. And then Storybook did all daycare to maximize, because I'm assuming you're getting paid more for daycare than you do for a student. And then max out what we can at Mozeney Preschool. And then, you know, I was just trying to brainstorm and then the transportation would be, you know, the first group of kids, you have all the AM sessions at half day at preschool. The rest of them are at Storybook. And then the bus comes from preschool, takes the Storybook, picks up PM, brings back, right? And then the full dayers, you have maxed out at the elementary school. And just segregating it like that, where one site is childcare, one site is halves, one site is fulls. I don't know if that was a part of the, the conversation or if you guys, that was something. But just when I looked at the survey, that's what came to my mind. Because at least for me on the board, do everything you can to get every single kid in the community into that school, right? Because get them as soon as you can. Maximize every revenue stream through childcare, through the state, through, through anything. That would be what, as a board member, what I, you know, we sit where we are now because we have declining enrollment. So if we can get more kids in those seats, take them.
It's good feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And honestly, the survey was a three-question survey. It was designed to be pretty quick and simple. Could we do something more extensive down the line? Absolutely, you know, and in more detail. I think the, the hope and the goal is to take a hard look at childcare as well as, you know, that like the transportation piece is something that we know, we want to cut some costs around that. So I do feel like designing classes that are strategic about the placement and kind of aligns with the childcare. So if we have that at Storybook and we potentially had that at Mozeney Preschool, we could eliminate some of that transportation midday would be the goal. But then revisiting this, you know, how is it working? Do we need to explore other options? But our, our goal is to, to really start with that piece in mind.
For what it's worth, I'm so happy that you guys went through all this work to do this because we've known for years that our 4K numbers have just continued to go down. And it's so uplifting to see that you guys had the initiative and put the work in to get it done and the numbers show that. And so thank you, because that's wonderful.
You're welcome.
Wonderful.
Kevin, did you?
No, I would just say that I am supportive of a solution which can provide a childcare solution for the families that need it. The schools are the hub, right, of a community. So if we want to encourage people to move to our district and they cannot, they cannot, they don't have a family member who can provide that care, for example, if both parents have to work out, I mean, it's not even two-parent home necessarily. We have, we ought to as a district, take responsibility for caring for our children. So I'm supportive of it. I was just, the data seemed skewed, that's all I was getting at. And so if you have 70 people, if you have 70 respondents or 70 kids, those are the people you're really going to build the proposal around. So it says possible decision. Are we looking for a motion tonight?
Well, that's what I was trying to ask earlier.
I'm willing to make a motion, but I, I'm trying to gauge exactly what we're trying to.
Right, and that's what I was trying to ask earlier. And I don't know if we need to make a motion, but I guess, looking forward, is there a timeline that you need to know to get these parents? So if there is a change, if we can get that need for the childcare, get for the parents who don't need it, to maybe, because we are looking for cost savings, so we don't provide that midday transportation. You know, the cost savings there. But then just to get that out to parents who might need it, so we're not telling them in August. You know, something, so what is that?
I have a motion.
Go.
And finish the last word, bro. I'll think of it. A motion to request the 4K admin team continue to allow enrollment to designate the best path forward with full support from the board, with the understanding that the team will come to the board. If further.
He's writing it down.
If, if further needs are warranted.
Perfect.
That works. Well, he's going to give it to you. Okay, so we have a motion by Peter.
I want whoever seconds it to repeat.
And a second by Amy, who doesn't need to repeat it. Further questions, comments? Okay? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carry. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah. We'll keep working at it.
All right, we are moving on to 8B, discussion, school improvement plans.
Yes, so we have an update this evening in regards to the, the building improvement plans that you heard about at the beginning of the year and then maybe a couple of months ago. So again, it is good for the board to be in the loop in terms of where we are with our school improvement plans. So thank you principals for putting the presentation together. I, I understand Brad's the timekeeper, no, I'm kidding.
We're happy to be here to share our, our mid-year building goal updates. And so we, just to kind of take us back to where we started, we designed our school improvement plans around the three pillars of culture, academics, and leadership to align with our leader and need program. And we are at kind of that mid-year point where we really take a look at what we've accomplished so far and where we're at and what our next action steps are to move forward. So taking a look at elementary in the area of academics, our goal for this year was to improve ELA proficiency for all students. And a few of the, the objectives that we had included in our school improvement plan were to grow in an understanding of our grade level standards and essential targets as they align with our curriculum resources. And I feel like that is something that at our elementary school, we definitely celebrate that as an accomplishment. We've worked really hard in rolling out the implementation of Haggerty and Ufly, two new resources for ELA. And have worked collaboratively with Kathy Batala, our literacy specialist for the district. We really have put a lot of time into the fidelity of that implementation, especially in the area of Ufly. And so we went in, Kathy and I have worked together and went into every classroom and observed every teacher teaching a Ufly lesson. And we're in the process right now of working together to design some individualized PD around what our like needs are to move that forward. It's been very enlightening to see kind of what's going well, what are things that we need to grow at? And so Kathy is, is working with the grade level teams and we'll be working through that kind of during their PLC time to help them move forward with that initiative. So that kind of goes with the other piece there of that high, high leverage ELA routines. So we've, we've worked really with our ELA representatives on this and designing our lessons to align with like our power standards with our new resources. We have a, kind of a partnership this year with a CISA representative that has helped Kathy and our teams work on designing lessons around our power standards. So a lot of good work is happening in that area. And with that being said, taking a look at our FastBridge results kind of mid-year, we, I, I wanted to really drill down and look at the growth in the area of phonemic awareness and phonics, which those two resources really, that's our primary focus. And that was an area that we felt we really were struggling in. And so it's exciting to see the growth and looking especially like at our youngest learners. So in kindergarten, in the fall, 60% of our students were on track to meet their goal in the area of phonemic awareness. And that increased to 73% being on track. Where in first grade, it was, they came in at like 58% kind of where they need to be. And then that has increased to 80%. So when you look at specifically the phonemic awareness and phonics piece, you're seeing that the things that we're working toward and, and really focusing on is having a positive impact, so.
Just a real quick comment, because this came up at the instructional program committee where the program that we moved away from at the middle school, we're moving more towards the science of reading. So last year, we were being proactive. That's why we, we added the Haggerty and Ufly components to make sure we had the phonemic awareness strand of that science of reading incorporated. We knew that was a weakness and it's great to hear that mid-year. I mean, we're not at the end of the year, but mid-year, it sounds like, well, we're seeing.
We're seeing growth in that area.
I just wanted to bring that up because the board, we, we've invested time and energy and money, materials for these programs. And it, it's still too early to say definitively, but we're seeing positive results. Wanted to bring that up.
And then continuing our next steps in the area, in this area, we are working on continuing to align our resources with our power standards. We're, I feel like teams are really close to laying out their kind of curriculum map. But we are really into like the common formative assessments piece. And so designing those assessments to align with power standards is the work that we're really on with, with ELA. So that's kind of where our, our next focus piece is.
And one more comment that I'll try to.
Sure, no, thank you.
So the other comment is, as a district, we believe strongly in a balanced assessment system and, and believe both in norm referenced assessments and what Jolynn is talking about, common formative assessments, being more of that curriculum-based measure. So we're able to measure growth with our own students and at the same time, look at our growth compared Mozeney students with students at the state level and national level. Because that comes up sometimes, folks asking about, do we as a district believe in both norm referenced assessments and curriculum-based measure? And absolutely, we do for both. Thank you.
Any questions on that? And then our, our next piece was culture. And so our goal was to build a positive school community by creating a supportive environment for staff and students. So some of the accomplishments and the things as we looked at what we've kind of tackled so far this year, building a, a trusting and safe classroom community. We have really been successful in implementing our safe spaces within our building. So we've, I know we've touched on this previously with the board, but we have our, our green room that we have where students can go to take a break and kind of self-regulate. So that has been a huge success, I would say, within our, within our building, providing a space where students can kind of reset. And so that's been amazing. We also have our peace place, which is that quiet workspace for them to go and work if in the classroom just isn't where their body needs to be at that time. As well as our pause place, which is just for those bigger behaviors when, when they're just unable to regulate. And so that is something we've put a lot of time into with our people services team, along with our behavioral specialist, dean of students, just a whole, whole team, as well as all of our staff have been working and we continually are working on ways to improve that and make that better. We created a behavior flow chart and this has been positive this year to kind of work through this. And this has really, I feel like, helped just the overall climate of the building. So we have different kind of steps when students are disrupting and need a break. So there's actually a take a break spot within the classroom. So they, they take a break and they all have a bobcat den within their classroom. So students are taught how to use that space. And there's tools around that and kind of parameters and, and they, they practice that. And so that's right within the classroom. And then we have the green room. It's been a huge asset to have two counselors available to help with students' social, emotional needs. So we have both Kelsey Rennie and Alyssa Garley available to help. And then of course, if there's bigger behaviors, administration. So this has been, this has been positive. Ms. Sam is our behavioral specialist. She's really our go-to person. Ms. Sam is our behavioral specialist, she's really our go-to person when it comes to kind of helping kids regulate, and she's been really great within the green room space there, so. The other piece is our leader and need piece, so we have SEL time each day in our schedule, and that has been really helpful, so that isn't just like a, you know, like a, another thing that's part of their day each day, so they're learning leader and need pieces, and that's factored into everything they do each day. And then we've had another focus on just really improving our structure and function of our PLC teams. So there's professional development happening monthly within our PLC meetings, and just trying to push to make it the best and most useful time that it can be. So that's been another thing. A thing that we noticed that we need to do, that we're continuing to work on, is connecting initiatives and educating our families and communities. So I know that we have some committees working on like getting Facebook blast out there, like what is leader and need, like habit one, habit two, trying to, you know, create those posts, talking about how we can like at family nights, how can we be educating our parents? Just different ways that we can involve them, so that these are things that they can be doing at home as well, so. And then lastly, leadership, some of the things to, what we're focusing on, we're really just opportunities to engage in learning for staff, family, and community. So I would say that our thing to celebrate is increased of like amount of personalized PD opportunities throughout the district, so that is within like our PLCs, but also during our in-service time when we have our PD choices happening. I think that's been a really positive addition this year. And staff have been able to share feedback on the needs that they have, and then we've worked hard to really try to provide those opportunities on where those needs are. So PLC happening, and then also just that we've really worked to continue with the PBIS piece of creating matrices and mission statements within the classroom, within the school community, revisiting that. That's a big part of what we do each day. We are working with our lighthouse team currently to kind of restructure our teams. There's things where we take steps forward, and then we realize we have to take a few steps backward. So, we are looking at our framework and our team, and our lighthouse coordinator, Renee Seeger, is a real big part of that, and she's helping with kind of restructuring those teams and just redefining the purpose. So, that's our next step with that. Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. If the board has not gone to see their new rooms at the elementary, they should. They're really, really awesome. Good job, girls.
Thanks, Don. Okay, that's all I got.
At the middle school, you'll see some of the repetitive things here with the pillars in all three buildings. So, if you remember our old SIPs, they did not look like this in the past. So, we took the leader and need framework, so all three buildings have academic leadership and culture as the pillars. When we look at the middle school and our academic piece, middle school staff believes that the students will improve academic performance. One of the things that we gave to staff this year, and that are used in our PLC meetings, is this pyramid, to give staff tools to remind them of where they are with their kids. The first tier is the universal level. Each side of the pyramid has the academic side and then the behavioral side. So it just shows our systems that we have in place, because when we get to those conversations and somebody is upset or frustrated, I don't know what to do else with this kid, we can pull that out, and now we've got something in front of us to help drive those conversations. We continue to use study tables after school. This afternoon, we had six kids, one staff member who helped kids with just homework remediation and that after-school success, and then we continue to contact parents if the kid falls below that C minus. Our culture. Being responsive to students and staff and family needs. This is where we've included Mirror Image, so this agency we contracted with, and they've really helped us with the attendance expectations, they do a lot of home visits. Mirror Image comes in with our high flyers, and Sarah meets with them weekly. Those folks are that bridge between schools and families, and they're utilized to help create those incentives, create plans, help parents get a routine down so that we can get kids to school. And we've seen an improvement in those kids that are chronically absent from school using that group. And then, this is repetitive of what Jolynn said. Our staff has really liked the in-service professional development choices that they've been given. They pick what they want to learn, and there's areas from staff wellness to student engagement, and that just builds that positive culture in the building. And then as far as the leadership goes, again, this is a little bit repetitive on our end in leader and need. We model the behaviors that we want in students. Every Monday, we have a time in our day where we teach leader and need. What we presented this afternoon in our curriculum and standards meeting was those soft skills that were pounding at the middle school. How do you resolve conflict person to person? How do you talk to people? Yesterday, I met with the entire eighth grade, and we discussed some of those soft skills on how to work through adversity, how to respond correctly, how do you build healthy relationships? So that we lay the framework for the high school, so that when they do get to high school, then they take more of that career-driven path. Our staff planned a lot of engagements over the course of the school year so far, with different opportunities for folks. This was an example that we had last week. If you do walk through our building right now, you're gonna see in that corridor between the Kreske Gym and the cafeteria, we have a kindness tree. So all the kids in the building were to write a kind message to somebody, and we put it as a leaf that is hanging right now in that hallway, so if you have a chance, check that out. We also had dress-up days, and we themed it with Valentine's Day. Our behavior data continues to improve, because we tie our behavior expectations to rewards, and we communicate that with staff and parents. This link here just shows you, when you click on it, an example of what we included in one of our newsletters, I believe it went out in October, just informing parents of incentive days, reward days, the expectations, how you earn them. The staff really felt important to reward the kids that are doing their job. So we set these expectations in place at the beginning of the year, communicated them out. And now that we're in second semester, those expectations are a little bit more strict, but the rewards are still tied to them. Since we've done this, the behavior data has improved immensely. So, this is the update so far with the middle school.
Brad, just a quick question, in the professional development days, for staff, do you look at that every year to change like with the test scores that we've seen this year? Are there things that are added there to possibly look to see where we can bolster and pick those up?
So, when we started out to speak for the middle school, when we looked at the, our test scores and how we dig into that information, we brought in Mr. McCain. He is utilized often in our CISA, in our PD and services, so we have that there. And really what we did is we looked at, how do we get down to the numbers that we want to get down to? Like, when do we start looking at the data that we want to give our teachers so that they can start setting goal meetings with the kids who scored poorly last year? Today, after our team lead meeting this last week, I sent out all of the target groups to our grade thirteen ones. So we utilize CISA, in this case, it's Mr. McCain. When we look at it district-wide, I know we utilize him in other areas, and he's kind of our guru right now, what we go to for math questions. You know, I've known Ryan over the years, because he was here, and he was a good avenue to pick his brain on how do we drill down the data that we wanted to improve that score. And then he also gave us a helpful hint in just what, like, what can we do during that week to provide a better testing environment? How do we, you know, how do we pick out our happy clickers, we call them, the kids that just fly through that test and proxy them better? Put them in smaller groups, so. Some of those real quick to-dos that you can do. Overall, we haven't utilized that specific piece in our PD yet. I don't see why we couldn't, but you know, that would take more of a conversation with the administrative group.
Yes, that's a great, just a quick follow-up. So, as we, the ILT, the instructional leadership team plans for, we now have our calendar set next year. And so now we'll talk about, okay, during that August time, utilizing some of that time to dive into heat maps. Now, the DPI has, okay, real sophisticated tools to go, okay, what are the standards that the test is really driving at? So we want to make sure that teachers understand not only their standards, but which standards are really being focused on the assessment that we have these high-stakes tests for. Our goal, of course, is to exceed expectations, all three schools, the entire district, and it's going to take a concerted effort as we move forward with our in-service plans to do just what you're saying, it's a great driving question, to now look at the test questions, figure out ways to, okay, here's a group of students that we need to really get going on, not only annual growth in reading and math, but we need to have more than annual growth. That's really tough, but I'm confident with the people and systems we have in place that we can do that.
Thank you.
Last but not least, the high school's version of ACL. You might recall from the beginning of the year, we talked about, we've got together during the summer, and we had our team lead, we did a giant data dig, and we wanted to really figure out what would be our overarching academic plan? What do we want to see from our kids? But in the past, we've utilized just overall decreasing the number of F's, students receiving failing grades, which is a great measure, but ultimately, we want those kids not just to fail, but we want to see the rest of the kids that are doing well also increase. So that helped tailor what we wrote for our building goal overall for the year academically. Through individual teachers, they do what's called SLOs during the evaluation process, they utilize student learning outcomes, and they have different choices that we've created from the menu of options from the pick from, including what we utilized last year, which was an increase in disciplinary literacy and also disciplinary math. And we went back to what you're saying, Daniel, when we looked at our test results and saw where we were at with math, and where we were at with English Language Arts compared to the state, we saw those are two areas we want to focus on. Well, can we focus on those areas still and accomplish this? That was really what we were trying to do. So, as we're looking at our building goals for the year, and we came into that mid-year, the mid-internals review part, like we look at from a evaluation standpoint, we saw what was pretty much a typical decrease in the grading and performance at a twelve-week period. The kids come in there in the first six-week period, we see usually a pretty elevated amount of good grades, and then as the year kind of progresses and more assignments, they're getting, decreases a little bit. And then as we get closer to the semester, as they're turning into work and realize, oh, this grade counts, then we see that increase again. So when we looked at building this goal, we really wanted to see a decrease in the number of students that were in that lower GPA area. Then we wanted to raise it up a little bit in the middle, and we wanted to raise it up at the end. So as we started looking at our semester grades, we saw that decrease, we saw the increase. But one of the things we wanted to do is keep this goal, we have the opportunism modify goal, as part of our educator effectiveness plans. But where we were looking at with that five percent, we wanted to stick with it, because even though we had a decrease in the total number of kids at that lower level, we did also see a decrease in the number of kids at the higher level. What happened was, we were seeing them go up, and we were seeing some go down. Really what we want to see is all of them shifting up, so we want to see that five percent increase. So we determined we're gonna keep that goal, that's what we really want to see by the end of the year from semester one to semester two, but also comparing to what we had from last year, overall GPAs. There's actually a lot more work to determine this in Skyward, because it's not real intuitive on how it calculates our GPAs by student, or by groups of students in the grade levels. So that's something a little doing, and we had to work with Skyward, and Gary, and Christie got involved, just trying to find a process that makes this easier. In doing that, we continued to look at the number of F's, and we did see compared to last year, a decreased number of F's per semester. We did, unfortunately, see an increase in the number of students receiving F's. And as we're looking at both of those things, we just kind of picked the data apart, and as we looked at the total number of F's, we had two students in particular who are no longer attending, which, Mozzany High School, received the majority of our F's out of our total number in the building. So both of them received eight F's out of eight classes, which didn't help us a lot, but they weren't attending, so they're no longer students. But that was one of those things, as you're going through the data, you start drilling down to the individual student performance of, you start saying, okay, what's going on with this student? What's going on with this student? And you're gonna see that actually comes back into play for our next building goal type in the culture. So, as we look at our culture pillar, one of the things that we always strive to do is increase more and more communication, more and more family involvement, more and more things where kids and the families can get involved around school, because as we all know, schools are the hub of what we do in our communities. So that was two of our overarching goals, with increased engagement. We were gonna measure, that was our measurable to see our attendance rate increase. Again, drilling into the data, we see some very interesting things come out of this, including our calendar, when we started looking at that. So our departments and individual teachers had taken an increase in communication with families, and as a building overall, we've had a lot more family engagement activities, including course selection, open house, and then overall, our building attendance rate from previous years has gone up. That was one of the areas on our school report card that we saw, and in our data dig during the summer, that our attendance rate, quite honestly, frankly, is pretty horrendous. So why, or was it a coding problem? Was it because we really have that many students out compared to the rest of the state? So as we're drilling into, yeah, we had some coding problems. Things weren't being coded correctly in our system, it was being reported to the DPI. But we also started noticing, well, there's certain things that are impacting this. Is it because the kids are out for athletics? State still counts that. If you're out for an excused reason, with a doctor's excuse, the state still counts that. Because ultimately, if yours don't have a kid's butt in the seat, you're not able to educate them whether they're excused or not, that's the attendance rate issue. So we started saying, the more that we get the kids engaged in the academic piece, the more we get them engaged in the school piece, the better the culture is, we're gonna see that increase in our overall attendance rate. So what we started noticing, we did see an overall building drop in attendance rate, and this is where it gets very interesting. And in specific days, three of November, you gotta think about that, three specific days of November. Okay, this is odd, and one specific date in December tanked our entire year so far for our attendance rate. Now, the good news behind all that is, because there wasn't as many days at those two points, we've got more days coming for the rest of the year, and we're hoping that it's gonna bring it up. So again, we're not gonna change our overall attendance rate goal, but it's interesting, because as you start diving into those days, those do have an impact on our attendance rate when you see deer hunting, and we got those other days before breaks and Christmas. It's amazing when you start looking at the data, how many kids are gone. We had one day that was thirty-three percent of our kids were called in excused. And by state law, they're allowed to do that up to five times per semester, so. It's just, it's one of those things, okay, we know that's gonna hit us. We know deer hunting's gonna hit us, we know Thanksgiving's gonna hit us, day before Christmas, day before breaks can hit us. What do we do to increase the rest of the engagement, the rest of the culture, and they can be there the rest of the days? So it's just one of those things that we're still working on, too. One other thing that we started doing from a culture standpoint, we actually did it at our last staff meeting, we did, as part of leader and need, we do what's called a measured results assessment, and it's surveying out the families, surveying out our students. And primarily, we saw a higher number of freshmen, students, and families respond to the survey. Well, one of the things that came through on that was, there was a concern, not, it wasn't a major issue, but it was one of the things we saw as a point we needed to work on was, students did not feel that they had a trusted adult in the building that they could go to. So when we started looking at the data more, it's like, okay, the freshmen, so they really don't know all of the adults in the building, so what can we do differently to get that to change? And as we started looking at that, how can we tie that into the academics? We started looking at our struggling students. So ultimately, we divide them up into quartiles. So our lower quartile performing academically students are more struggling students. We started saying, okay, what are we doing to meet their needs academically? Started looking at who the students were, and actually, at our last staff meeting, we broke that list down, there's ones that were not getting additional services, whether it's through special needs, or alt-ed, or any of that. And we put that list up, and we have all of our teachers now gonna start putting their name on that list, saying, how can I build a different relationship with that kid? How can I extend what I'm currently doing with that kid? Do I know that kid from a class before? What can I do differently to help enhance some of that, you know, the culture piece that kid has? So that was one of the other things that we just started doing, that we're gonna anticipate that's gonna have a positive impact for the rest of the year, too. All right, last but not least, leadership. You guys had a chance to see the high school spotlight with our lighthouse team. It's a little different than at the elementary and middle school team. Our focus is more for the leadership opportunity for our students. So we have a lighthouse team, that you guys got to see some of the work that they've done so far this year. Last week, one of the snack shacks actually opened up at our school store, and that was because of the work that our lighthouse team determined we needed. During our extended learning time, it's twenty minutes during the day, we started seeing a line to our snack shack, all the way down to our choir and band room. So by the time these kids were done, and normally it's reserved for students on PRIS, so the students are academically stable, they don't need to go to a teacher to get extra help or anything like that. That's usually reserved for juniors and seniors only. We opened it up now this semester for sophomores that are in their PRIS, but we mysteriously saw a lot of freshmen standing in that line. And we started noticing, they're not getting to where they need to be within a certain amount of timeframe, not even five minutes, and this line is all the way down, like, sit down and pass you out toward it. So we're trying to figure out a way to get this done. Lighthouse team said, well, we need different locations, we need different options for them, so at least they can be faster when they're doing it. So they came up with a plan to start their own snack shack, and we're gonna be utilizing our study home to it. But then also with our DECA team, they're gonna be utilizing the school store again for it. All of them are regulated by what we can serve in the state of Wisconsin, so it's gonna be the same type of things that we're allowed to... so it's going to be the same type of things that we're allowed to sell students. They're not getting Mountain Dew and super sugary stuff and all the things that the kids want to have. It's stuff that's approved by the state for what they can have during that, for dietary requirements. With a little twist that some of the things we pick are going to be a little different from this snack shack. So that was a result of what the kids have done. The opening PRIS for sophomores was another thing they've done too. Overall, the lighthouse has been a really, it's been a really nice addition to opportunities for kids to take on leadership roles. The Leader and Me trainings, we've been done, we've had 12 of those meetings with our lighthouse team. But again, similar to what you guys are doing, we're doing Leader and Me on Mondays during our ELT time, where the teachers are actually delivering that curriculum from a Leader and Me standpoint from seven of us, which is, it's a little different, I think, from what we've got compared to the younger kids, but at the same time, there are, we're getting some pretty positive things, especially from some of our freshmen and sophomore graduates. Uh, I believe that is it. Any questions on my stuff? No, I got a last slide.
Sounds good.
That's the last. The ducks went away, but it's still a nice slide. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to item nine, the public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to participate is identified. And I believe we have one person wishing to speak tonight. Michelle, yes, if you'd like to just clearly state your name, address, and what item you're speaking to the board.
So I am Michelle Kuplinsky, address is 808 14th Street in Moesney. And I am actually here on behalf of the community to present some funding that we did. So after the events of February 1st, a lot of the community members came together and wondered how we could give back to teachers, police, the bus staff. So we actually raised a total of $2,872. And we have done a Gorski's Breakfast at all of the school buildings so far. And then this Friday, Casa Mescal is also partnering with us to do a district-wide police, fire, EMS, and school bus company luncheon, you could say, for in-service day. So I have $672 that is left over after partnering with Gorski's, Casa Mescal, and Charlie's Hardware with their donations. So we wanted to present that tonight to be utilized by the administration from all the schools, however they feel, if there's things that they realized could be beneficial, God forbid that should ever happen again, anything that they felt could be utilized by the students and staff.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
I do have a copy of all of the funding stuff as well as cash here, so I don't know who the best person to present that to be. Michelle. And I wanted to do it tonight, so it's on record.
That's absolutely wonderful. Thank you very much.
Enjoy lunch on Friday.
Did you thank you or something?
Yes, yeah, that's great. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, item 10. At this time, nothing is being pulled from any of the agendas. I would seek a motion to approve. We have a motion by Kevin, is there a second? And a second by Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item 11, discussion and possible decision on the approval of the monthly vouchers list.
Before we do that, I guess that's it. So on the consent agenda, the personnel have highlighted one of the teachers' resignation letters. Is that the first person who is taking advantage of that new policy?
Yes.
Where they can retire basically?
No, 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 that was, that was just, there was an amount given for early by the end of January 31st. We approved that in December.
No, that's not right.
No, 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 this is in addition to that policy.
This person is retiring on July 15th.
Right, but if they let us know by the end of July.
Of course, no, no, by the end of January.
January, sorry, January 31st.
It was incentive, was it 1,500?
Oh, so that is, okay.
That's what that was.
That's what that is covered.
But the same person would have fallen under what you're speaking about.
That's, I'm just making sure.
She would have qualified.
Yeah, Stephanie can explain that, that was a incentive.
No, I, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, it was something we.
Okay, all right, so I would need a motion to approve the monthly vouchers list.
I'll make the motion to approve the monthly.
We have a motion by Kelly, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Amy. Roll call vote please.
Kelly, or Kelly Zbrom.
Kelly, get here, yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Hansen.
Yes.
Hermani.
Yes.
Kaiser.
Yes.
Maple.
Yes.
Stankowski.
Yes.
Kalander Zbrom.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, motion will pass. Item 12, discussion and possible decision on the acceptance of the monthly treasures report. I would seek a motion.
Make the motion.
We have a motion by Megan, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Kevin. Roll call please.
Stankowski.
Yes.
Kalander Zbrom.
Yes.
Kelly Zbrom.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Hansen.
Yes.
Hermani.
Yes.
Kaiser.
Yes.
Maple.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, and that is approved. Okay, we are moving on to old business, item 13. Item 13A is discussion on the ad hoc safety committee update. And that is.
Ms. Maple, you want to take the lead on that?
I certainly will, give it my best shot with my voice, so just bear with me.
Let me know, yep.
Very well. So our safety committee meeting met January 23rd, and some of the big nugget takeaways from that meeting. Keep in mind that this was shortly right after the incident with our school resource officer while he was out on patrol, yet before the February 1st incident with the evacuation of the students. But there was discussion for student handbook updates to make sure that it goes in there again, the legal language about ensuring that students are very, they know the severity of making any type of a threat against any type of a staff member or any type of bomb threat accusation. So those types of things, we're trying to make sure that that language is in, that the handbooks and disseminated, which was also done in some of the email updates that were going forward. Additionally, Chief Grams gave an update about the two additional school resource officers that will be hired in the future that are 75% funded by the school district, so while they're with the school and while it's in session. And so one individual at that point in time was projected to be hired with the police department in February and potentially a second one this coming June. But again, we won't see those individuals for about a year until they're fully trained and until we can get at least one with the district, but that was the timeline as at that point in time. Additionally, there was conversation with, since we were talking about professional development earlier, that there's, it's called dytep training, and that would be for staff to get better educated, to understand when there are students under the influence of drugs and alcohol. Additionally, to try and get staff, more staff CPR and AED certified as well, to fall underneath that professional development umbrella as well. Some of the other things that were discussed is the three buildings had talked about their safety meetings that they have on a routine basis, and that they are getting ready to implement run, hide, fight, and that will be transitioning from Alice. So just getting ready for that transition as well. Additionally, there was conversation brought up by several committee members and Chief Grams as well that we need to try and come up with a type of solution for the Kresge Center entrance during the day because there are some security concerns. So some of those conversations are going to be had and put in place so that we can come up with possible solutions with the stakeholders. So that was a big concern of the security, the safety committee as well. Additionally, with the school perception survey that we're going to be having in the near future, we wanted to make sure that there are going to be some safety questions embedded within that survey as well. We also further discussed more of the grant opportunities in those discussions, so we are continuing to look into that as well and potentially a shared grant writer. So just still continuing to kick around that possible option. Many may notice that the school, the High Street parking has changed. So on the south side of that street from middle school to high school, there are now signs that are posted that there is no parking during the school day. So that can allow for EMS and law enforcement to come on in should the need arise. So just making in for snow removal as well. That is the big nuggets for the safety meeting. But additionally, I do want to add onto this, like I had stated, this meeting was held right after the incident with our school resource officer. So I do think that is absolutely fitting for all of us to say that we all certainly wish Officer Krausey a safe and that we're all praying for him, and best wishes to him and his family for a full and speedy recovery. I know the administration, the staff, the students, the community have done a lot to reach out to him, and I'm very grateful for that, and we are looking forward to his return. And additionally, I also want to just say as well that I too have heard nothing but wonderful comments about the evacuation of the students and that our next safety meeting that we're going to have on March 5th, that we plan to do some forms of debriefing. So I know some of the buildings have already begun that debriefing process. The administration is doing that, and then we'll try to get together with fire and police as well at our next safety briefing, so that we are always doing the continuous process improvement to push that out to parents. But I thank you, Mr. Way, for trying to get ahead of that already and pushing some of that out to the parents and the community this past week. So thank you for that. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, good report. Item 13B, discussion and possible decision on the ad hoc human growth and development curriculum advisory committee.
You want me to talk, or we'll be jumping whenever you want, otherwise you can take it. Either way.
I took a drink and I'm doing okay, so I'll just briefly say with that, when we looked into our policy, we had found out that according to state statute, that if we have any curriculum that is teaching human growth and development, that we need to have an advisory committee. So we wanted to make sure that we were in compliance. So some of those pieces in needing for this ad hoc advisory committee, it needed to be individuals within the community that are medical, clergy, students, parents, some of those types of pieces. So Mr. Way and I, through the curriculum committee, had come up with some individuals that we had reached out to that fit these roles, and we are bringing it forward to be approved. And with this committee, it's going to be potentially a three to four-year term, or I'm sorry, three to four meetings per year, a two- and a three-year term, and seven to nine members that fall into some of those categories. And so with that, we will just seek a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve this committee as presenting.
Okay, a motion by Peter's a second?
I'll second.
A second by Amy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item 13B, discussion and possible decision on the school perception community survey.
Thank you. So want to present this with a sense of patient urgency. We have a timeline, and we've been on top of it, and I'm confident that we can stick with this timeline. And what we're looking for this evening, I'll begin with the end in mind, is really a motion from the school board, an approval to move forward with this survey. We've done, want to stress that Steve, Michelle, and I, we're a team, and we're all here tonight, so we're all here to answer any questions you might have. But we, I really want to stress, to keep on track with this timeline, really our goal is to get this reviewed, to talk about it, to get it approved, so that really this spring, you can see the timeline up here, really getting this out sooner than later. In other words, if for, if we waited until March, really the meeting that we have in March is too late. We would almost have, we would have to have a special board meeting, and we might, but just wanted to stress that with everyone. So really, the questions that we have here, you can take a look at, at the survey, where it's really to get the input from the community looking at the pulse for operational capital projects. And so we're getting the word out, we have a local printer aligned where we want to get this out to the printer as soon as possible. We have a meeting with Darren and Rob from School Perceptions this Thursday where we want to just move forward. There might be slight verbiage changes, we want to get that blessing. You know, we can run this by Diane, but certainly want to keep it tight here tonight with this survey. So I will turn it over. Michelle, do you want to talk a little bit about the financial planning part of this too? That's page two.
Oh, yes, yes. So in, in planning, looking at what, excuse me, I haven't spoken a while tonight. In looking at our future revenues and expenditures based on projections of our student enrollment, looking at student membership, looking at that in a couple of different ways, looking at casting our current student population forward a grade, and then also looking at a cohort model, our enrollment and membership continues to decline. So looking at what does that look like for our budget deficits in the future, including in their percentage increases for utilities, for salaries, for benefits, continuing to fund something into Fund 46 for capital repairs and replacements. We are estimating or projecting to need for $2.5 million over the next four years. The first year or two, we would be building fund balance and then extending that out over the final two years. The reason for that is in working with school perceptions, it's easier to explain to the public just keeping a consistent dollar amount over time as opposed to fluctuating dollars, like dollar amounts. The tax increase on that is projected to be $1.26.
Do you want input, like where that's yellow? Is that, are you kind of asking for, I guess you're asking for input on the entire survey, but a thought that I had when I first, when I first read it was, not only is our rate going to be below 2020, 2022, it's below all the way back to 2013 and 14, and I don't even know before then as well. I mean, like in essence, we're asking you to have a rate that goes back maybe lower than it's been for more than a decade, so just, not just, just that one year.
Yeah, good point, thank you. So thank you, Michelle, and you can see on page three, if you go to page three here, I'm not sure who's running the. Thank you. So we're looking at cost-cutting options now for next year, and down the road, getting a pulse from the, you know, our communities where they would see cost-cutting options if we do not pass a referendum. And again, operational referendums are very common across Wisconsin. 85, 86% of districts have gone to operational referendums, so wanted to keep that in mind. So.
Mr. Way?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I plug something in here?
Absolutely, they don't go to Steve with facility challenges after that, go ahead.
This, the need for the two point, the $2,050,000 is with cuts already projected for next year that would carry into future years. So we are looking at making $800,000 worth of cuts, and this takes that into consideration. So if we were not to make those cuts, we would need more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, could you talk a question, go ahead.
So that's a decision that the A-team made that's coming to the board?
Yes.
So I'm just curious, I'm not opposed to what you said, what your team has decided. Why are we asking, if we really need to maintain what we're doing, if we really need $2.85 million, why are we asking for only $2.05 million? Why are we stepping forward and saying, we're going to cut $800,000 from the budget although we need $2.05 to not cut more? So I'm just trying to understand and wrap my head around it.
Well, in looking at the actual items that are projected to be cut, some of them would be due to right sizing our classes because we have been. because we have been dropping students year over year. So some of our grade levels are much smaller than they've been in the past and they're projected to be smaller. So in right sizing, you know, hopefully through attrition, then those would be some cuts. There's other areas that the board has asked administration to look at. And so those are areas that are on there as well. And then just natural things.
So now, okay.
Yes, yes. But I get.
Fair enough. Good answers and appropriate.
And could I?
Go, sorry.
One more, too, is the timing of this and the timing of things now. We need to plan, you know, what is the possibility that it doesn't pass? So in looking at the next year, we don't have that yet. You know, we're sitting here in, in February and we haven't passed it. So, yes.
So I don't remember from meeting to meeting to meeting all the things that we talked about necessarily and approve. And I love the idea that we shouldn't be budgeting for things that we're not doing anymore. Or the right sizing term, I love that. Maybe I missed it, but I don't think we're explaining that to the public as to take the survey.
Correct, that we're already making cuts. Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, and the reason why, what you just explained. And I'm like, well, because if I can't understand it, I'm, and I'm in these meetings all day, every day, or every month. I'm just, I was missing that piece, especially when you said we're already cutting 800,000. I just think that we should maybe let the voters know that.
On page eight.
It is on page eight?
Page two, I'm sorry.
On page two? Sorry?
We had just discussed that this morning.
So what we discussed this morning is adding verbiage, just talking about how part of our story is the right sizing and the belt tightening and communicating that with our community. So we would like to, at the meeting with School Perceptions on Thursday, add some verbiage just to the point that you're saying. What are some things that the district has done to show?
Our fiscal responsibility.
Yes. So it is finding that sweet spot, that balance between, okay, we're doing everything we can to show that fiscal responsibility and being efficient in looking for ways to tighten our belts and go to the public with that number of, you know, here it is with what we're looking at in the future. But to your point, we could certainly up that amount in the survey to indicate, you know.
So I went, when we were at the school bar convention and met Milwaukee last few weeks ago, I went to the presentation by Nicolay.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Nicolay goes for an operational referendum, I believe every two years, and a construction referendum every four to six years. And they've been doing this since like 2008. Something, and I'm, I don't recall the entire thing. I was actually gonna, I deleted the app already from my phone. So I didn't remember the login now, but I was going to go back and look for that because I remember seeing all those explanations. Here's the belt tightening we've already done, and now we need to go forward.
Yes.
Asking you for more for the routine things that we talked about two months ago, right? I went on that big litany and, you know. So I, I didn't see that, which is why I brought it up.
Yes, and.
So that would have to be added to that this page?
Correct, yes.
But somewhere maybe split out separately to make them understand that this is already being done. But on top of that.
And my ego isn't so big that it has to say Mosany School District leaders, but it says to address these challenges, Mosany leaders. And I didn't know, when I read that at first, I thought, was the city involved in this? The township leaders? It doesn't say school board administrators and board members or. I just think to communicate clearly is going to be helpful.
Got it.
And to piggyback off that, it also doesn't say that we're asking for, to improve, you know, for the capital part because we have a school that we're getting rid of that debt, right? But it should explain that like our elementary school is about to be paid off. And in the absence of that debt, we would like to ask voters to consider letting us take more debt so we can continue to improve our facilities. You know, we've, we paid it off early by, you know, four year or two years, whatever. But yeah, I do feel like there's a lot of pretty big gaping holes in this survey.
Steve, do you want to talk facility challenges page, please?
So we're with School Perceptions, just trying to get an overall feeling of how they like the gathered information presented of public, picking some of the higher items that they felt had meet to them. Going along the safety lines, as you can see, there's high school entrance needs to be modified, you know, to handle that better. Technology education shops, classrooms, space equipment. Those are really key items out there with the tech ed piece. I want to make a note of the high school 1960s kitchen. And I want to put the date in there because people may think that's been modified or changed over time. That is original from 1960. So infrastructure is going to come back and need to be addressed in some fashion. And then we have the highlight areas, high school offices, just small district office, not easily accessible to the public and staff. And then the option, 4K early travel programs do not have dedicated space. And some of those things are reflected on the plan that Steve put in there. If you look at the legends to the side in the following sheet. If you turn that page, you'll get into recommended plan, things that were brought forward to you folks back in May. And basically I walked through that to the public of what's on the docket for the estimated costing. And needs to be noted in that legend on the planned data on the lower right-hand side, the gym at this point when we presented to you is an alternate bid. And that's also follows with the questions after this. But School Perceptions felt that a more generalized layout of what you see in front of you is what they would rather get into, not get into the details like we did kind of in the past. They feel that's a better representation of what you're asking for, if that's what you're asking for down the road.
Just a question, would this be a little bit bigger?
What's that?
Would this be a little bit more clear, bigger as far as like the building?
Well, we looked at that, you know, we had different readings to them. And we asked them how they wanted to see the information to them. And they've actually asked us to, I guess use the term boil it down to just simple pictures.
Okay.
Don't get too in depth at this point. It's just recommended plan if we go forward with something on this line. Just don't get into the weeds, I guess. They said it's not healthy at this point for the public. So I guess I'm kind of leaning on what their recommendation is on that. And we've kind of modified that reflect that they were asking for.
And then there's additional information or additional questions for the additional gym project as the board had indicated earlier, to have that as, just gather information on. So we included that as well. And then there's information, the last page, how is the district doing in each of the following areas? And then just some demographic information there. So in talking with Rob and Darren from School Perceptions, based upon the group listening to, like they did listen to the board, like your, our first meeting and then following up with us, this is the recommended direction here with the survey. So looking for approval of moving forward with this document in some capacity.
Piggyback, another question off of Kevin's to Michelle, the 2 million. I saw it noted for the next four years. We're in an election away in November to continue our high inflation rates. Does that take that into account? We might have another four years of 8% inflation?
I don't think I put in 8% inflation. I do have utilities increasing, two and a half to 3% per year. Transportation increasing, salaries increasing, insurance.
How much are you increasing salaries by?
3%.
Health insurance, same?
10% and then dropping it to 5%.
Boy, I don't know if I would do that.
If we continue to high. If health insurance continued to be increasing past 10%, we would probably need to make plan changes.
I think what Peter's asking is shouldn't we be building in those contingencies that is even greater?
If it was two years, it'd be one thing. Four is a long time.
So hearing the board, you're wondering if getting information from the community for a larger, potentially larger operational referendum would be a prudent decision?
If we're going to ask, we better make sure we ask right.
Three, no, right?
Yeah, I'm not saying three or four million.
No, but. But offer, offer options. I think giving them. So is, this is the packet, this is the information that we're going to be sending out. What's, what's here and what's presented?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So, yes, messaging needs to be clear and articulate, as everybody has said. And breaking it down into very foundational terms. I additionally think on that overall satisfaction that we should have something in there about safety.
Yeah, like on the question that talks about, question that talks about a high school entrance needs to be modified to better monitor and manage visitor access. You know, we don't need to, you know, somebody else should wordsmith this, but we don't want to be another Columbine or. And nowhere is it saying, I mean, I was, honestly, if this had been done by the administrative team, I would have said, great job. Send it to School Perceptions, let them do the wordsmithing and clean it up and build on it. I'm shocked to learn that this is the model we're being presented by School Perceptions itself. I feel that this is not the quality that I would have expected for what we're paying them for. I'm just being honest.
I agree.
This is what they do. And.
And they're like the go-to.
Jessica, I understand what you're saying. You're trying to get what is the public?
Yeah.
We don't have to make everything contrived because that's poor. But you have to communicate to the public why you're asking for these things. You know, I know it says better monitor and manage visitor access. Why are we asking them to do that?
Yes.
Because we've had this school safety committee for two and a half years. Right? Right?
Close.
Or whatever.
Also, they're using the word gym and everyone knows that's like, it's like, don't say gym. Call it a community center, call it a whatever space, don't say gym. And so I just feel like this.
It's not just for, you're right.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's your messaging. You can't use the word. I'm, I'm with Kevin. I am shocked that this is what we got from them because I went to, I, we, that Rob, I went to both his things at the, at the state convention, was just absolutely floored. And I am shocked and disgusted and disappointed that this is what we got because to me, it's got completely the wrong messaging. It does not say anything to the fiscal responsibility that the board has done. It says nothing to the elementary school. And the whole reason we were even thinking of capital, capital referendum is to take new debt into the old debt that we paid off early. It says nothing to that. So if I knew nothing, what you can, you know, a lot of people don't watch and aren't, don't come here. So you can assume that they are, this is, this is the information they're getting. I would absolutely say, no, 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 right? Because it's not conveying any of the great things that we did. Also, to be clear, I thought when we had the, that one meeting we all remember where I was trying to convey that we're so landlocked, I don't remember saying that this was the direction that we were going to go with. Because as you remember, I said, you know, we have all those, you can't go anywhere further here. I mean, you are literally pushed up and you've got all those apartment buildings there. You can't, the school could never possibly afford to buy all of that property. I mean, those 16-unit dwelling, one after another, that lined down, you know, river, across from the River Park. It's like, we can never afford that. So I guess, I didn't even, to me, when I see that this was what we were going with, I also was floored thinking, I thought that we were still in the discussion of, you know, doing something else. Kevin had talked about his ideas. I agree, do something back here. And so I guess I'm a little flabbergasted even to see this is the plan that we're going with. And that's all I have to say.
I agree with Megan and Kevin though. We are, excuse me, leaving a lot of what we've accomplished out. It's kind of giving a survey to somebody and not giving them the background. And there has to be some background of what we've achieved and where we want to go and why we want to go.
Yes, and justification, yes.
It's good feedback. I'll share this feedback with Darren and Rob.
Did they watch that one meeting that, I mean, Kevin talked about different stages of, wasn't it up to 60 to 70 million dollars in capital improvements?
He just did the math. It was 61 million.
Yeah, but now we're at 30.
But, yeah, but.
And we're the plan that David gave us. He's not even here anymore. I think Steve worked a little.
We'll keep moving forward and we'll go back and keep plugging away.
They can listen to this meeting too.
We just may have to have, and it's fine, a special board meeting to approve prior to a regular scheduled meeting. And I'm confident that we'll nail the survey and meet the needs of the board and the community. So your feedback is wonderful. We appreciate that.
Okay, just one other thing to, Henry. We are kind of on a timeline here, aren't we?
Yes.
Oh, and that's been a special meeting in March, right?
Yeah, so we need this.
We'll see again, two weeks.
But it's been done right.
Yeah, we needed it two weeks ago.
Well, we need it tonight.
Let's say get planning on a special meeting in about two weeks.
I'd get it on the agenda.
Well, they want to send it to the trooper printer on the 11th, okay?
Of March?
Yeah, it's on the screen.
It needs to be, yes.
Say we need to be here.
I think some other measurable or quantifiable data in terms of like the facility changes, like adding in how old some of these, the lockers are, when they were last replaced. Because just saying.
They weren't.
That the high school office is too small.
Yeah.
Or the high school lockers are worn.
Did you look in your, in your, in your folder? Did you get the new one out of your folder?
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
There's a version in your folder.
We updated the verbiage on lockers to make it clearer.
I have, sorry.
I thought this was for closed session. I never even opened it.
There's an updated version.
Even the 4K building, you know, can we take, can we build out the survey and the needs of the community and?
Yeah, this really.
It is reworked. It's, some of the stuff is worded a little differently.
But still, you're.
No, damn, I don't know.
So we'll, we'll work on this. And Michelle or Steve, any other comments?
I was going to say, based on the board's feedback, you know, the financial on the operations, I think, you know, maybe these are the cuts that we've made. You know, if we had this X referendum, we would make sure, you know, we would just maybe be tight for the next several years, but we would be able to survive. Based on X dollar amount, we could maybe add some things back or we cushion against inflation. Are you looking at something like that, maybe with a couple of options finance? Because it is a survey, we want to know what the community wants.
Should we email our ideas?
I would say that it's going to be hard for us to ask the community what they want if we as a board don't even, have not come together on what we might want to ask the community what they want. Right? So I'm not saying that the entire side of this room thinks that we should be asking for more than 30 million, but at least three of us, it sounds like do. And that provides an entirely new opportunity for you and your team to come up with some of the potential other things. But it has to be more than just three or three of us, right?
Correct.
My feeling about going to the public for a referendum is that. My feeling about going to the public for a referendum is that we really need eight, we could maybe squeak by with seven board members in support of a referendum proposal. Um, ideally, it would be great to have all nine of us of like mind. But I think it's important that, I mean, we, we, I know our meetings run long when we get into all these laborious discussions, but I think we should have a discussion about, is thirty million the right number, right?
Yes.
We want a referendum to pass.
Yes.
And I don't believe the public would vote for a sixty-one million dollar referendum, even though I think that's what we should be doing, is planning for thirty to forty years out, all right? I really think that that's what we should be doing. I don't like the idea personally, as a board member, of not thinking about what we might be able to do if we ask for an operating referendum of three million dollars a year for four years, okay? But if the board as a whole doesn't think that we should be asking the public for up to three million, it's only a survey, right?
Right.
We can always come back if the, if they say that, if the survey says that, you know, they're, they won't go for three million dollars even though I think it should be more than that. Same with the capital referendum, right? So I would like to hear what the board as a whole is thinking in these areas, because otherwise, how can we give good guidance to the administrative team and ultimately to school perceptions about what to plug into that survey?
I don't know how we can be a forward-thinking district if we're just meeting the needs only as is. You know, we talked about how do we bring revenue growth in, how do we bring in families, we're not gonna do that by being stagnant.
And I think we need to make it more community-minded, that the community feels that this building is for them too, not just for this, it's for their, them, their families. And I think the wording, like Kevin, you have all said, needs to be more succinct and more positive, it needs more positive wordage, you know, we, we have done this, we have done these things. You know, some with even out of referendum, you know, you have to sometimes, um, announce or give your, your positives out because all they hear is the negative. You know, praise your positive things you've done. And then ask them.
And then build off of those.
Yeah, right.
We've, we've done what the community has asked us to do.
Right, which included keeping the schools open.
Open.
So we're, we've not, we're not going to the community saying, you know, we listened in twenty twenty, you know, we kept our schools open, we, 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 we had prom, we had homecoming, we offered opportunities, we attracted neighboring students to come to our district because of how we were forward-thinking as a district.
Right.
Yeah.
And honestly, we can't use that ten years from now, but we can certainly use it four years later, right?
Correct, correct.
Can I interrupt for just one second? Cause just being in the forefront of what you're talking about and discussion I've had with, with our team this time at school perceptions, um, and if you wanna jump back to just what you were talking about when I presented you the mock-up situation, a lot of information into that. It speaks to exactly what you said, what have you done for me lately, right? That thirty-two stuff, we do the cafeteria, all things are brought forward and, and the reason I'm saying this is I'm not a school perception person or a survey person, I don't know the secret sauce of what they're trying to get into, okay? And far be it for me to even speak to that, so the information that you were presented has also been presented to them, and I'm gonna let them sift it, okay? And present it to get the information back that they feel gives you the best viable barometer, okay? I will leave you in that mindset, because that's what we're really asking for, I think the question you're gonna have to decide, to your point, Peter, too, that you're gonna be forward-thinking, are the numbers you see in the survey to where you wanna be looking at, is a three million mark or forty million, I don't really know that, right? That's a question you as a board have to ask, I cannot drive that nail to the, to the floor for you, okay? But I'm just saying that, um, I need that guidance from you folks, we really do, I need to get to school perceptions so they can tolerate and, and craft those questions, right? Their asking of questions from what I've gleaned off of this process is that they have a way of getting what they want for your ultimate referendum question. I was guarded, and we were all guarded not to go too deep into the weeds on the question, the information that I already gave them, okay?
They cautioned us several times on that.
So I have to just put that out to you that I don't want you going home tonight thinking that we didn't do our diligence, and there is a certain matter of fact of how they want that framed, okay?
Put some of that to the madness.
And I, I don't have that answer, I, all I know is I can go off their record, what they, when they put that out there, what comes back to them, remember, they said they just needed ten percent to give you an accurate number.
Right. Right.
Which astonishes me, but they know their business, so I just wanna caution everybody about where we're going.
Right.
And what you're asking for, because you don't get both sides of the coin, okay?
Right.
And you don't tip your toe in the water that you don't understand, I'm paying for those services, cause I'm a taxpayer too, I just want a good barometer to come back to you that you can make a decision what you wanna do in November, if anything.
So if we come out with a thirty million dollar survey.
Yeah.
And the board decides, you know, you know, we've looked at it, Steve has given us some great ideas and proposals, we're gonna go to the, and, and the public through the survey, this ten percent, gives us kind of a nod for, they would support that, let's say.
Correct.
And then we come back and we offer thirty-one point three million dollars, there is a segment of the community that is gonna hold on to this survey and they're gonna hang us with it, and we have to be very cautious about not later than asking on referendum day for more than what we surveyed them about.
Correct, and that was a question about the timing mechanism that we're dealing with, because they wanna close that gap, you don't want that gap out there and your public saying, okay, we did a survey and a year and a half later, well, costs have changed.
We had that, yes.
The numbers I showed you folks have made is a moot point, that's why I put a number up to that to cover the base, because I can tell you, talking to people of industry, one point six, one point seven five, it's been up. So it's starting to level a little bit, but whose crystal ball is clear, no one's is, and by the time you'd ask that question, if you've got a referendum passed, you're not gonna even be bidding that out until a year past. I have six to eight months of design process.
And from my lens, going through this process, going out to the community and you, you have a number up, we need to be consistent with what that number is, that's where the details come out, where, um, the administration goes out there and sells this to the community, that, that's after the board decides to do the survey and to have the questions, that's the opportunity for the, um, salesmanship and the communication to be crystal clear, um, like what Megan was talking about and, um, really all of those detailed questions. But I agree where we don't wanna be, I mean, I, I'm, I'm tight, I'm fiscally conservative and I think most of us, all of us here are, I just have to be careful, we need to ask for enough, to your point, you know, what is inflation gonna do down the road and different things like that? So we wanna find, again, I'll go back to my starting talking point, that sweet spot of, okay, we, we've really worked with this to, to, to hone out, you know, the belt tightening, the community will wanna hear that we are tightening our belts, here's what we have done, and the funding formula, it's flawed, that's why eighty-five to eighty-six, that's why we need to get out there and, and, you know, I've been out to the Mozeney Cafe, talking to people in different groups, that has to continue so people understand that. That doesn't happen in a survey, that happens relationship, um, so that's, that's the piece that's gonna be hugely important to get this passed in the community. So to everybody's point, if we can glean out, okay, that number and then kind of work, you said that secret sauce, I love how you said that, Steve, it's really, they're the experts on gleaning what we're looking for at this point in time to move forward so that we can stay on track to have, remember, November's huge for us, if we decide to go for a referendum, we're anticipating right now eight hundred thousand deficit spending, this administration is, is committed to a balanced budget next year, and so we have belt tightening to do right now and to right-size and to then go to the community, we've done all these things and, and here's now, we, we, this is vital, you know, we need you to support our schools, like they have, we have a wonderfully supportive community.
And additionally, to your point, Kevin, you said you're visionary, you're thirty to forty years down the road, that's not the average person.
I understand.
So looking to what Steve is saying with the school perceptions, we also have to keep in mind, even if we ask for a little bit more than what is on paper here, that we don't know what this board is gonna look like in two to three years. So this board is fiscally conservative, but the next one may not be, or maybe they're even more the, the other way. So we have to go off of these two to three-year chunks, and going back to what you had said earlier, is that I, I'm not sure what school district it was with the referendum.
Nicolay.
They go every, every so many years, and that's probably the why, because there's so much volatility and change in the board and the, potentially the administration, the needs, so you gotta chunk it, I think is the best way to do it and break it down more foundationally.
And to be clear, Mozeney is not Nicolay, Nicolay's one of the wealthiest districts in the state, right?
That's right.
But it doesn't mean that they're going to referendum just because it's a wealthy district, you know, Whitefish Bay, Glendale and all the rest. Um, uh, it's, I mean, they have four foreign languages, they're the only school district in the state that teaches Hebrew, right? So there are reasons why they have to do certain things, but they also have people coming in, um, into their, they have a lot of open enrollment coming in, and so they wanna continue to be appealing and attractive to neighboring districts. So, um, it, it was an interesting process how they laid out the last decade of what they've done and the why, right? So when they most recently passed their seventeen million dollar referendum, um, the capital referendum, um, the public knew when they voted on that one that they were gonna be asked to vote on another one in four years, probably for twenty-one or twenty-two million. So they've got this team that continually is thinking out into the future, like Steve looks, comes to us and says, here are your budget needs, you're gonna, you guys are gonna have to fund this patchwork, you know, and upgrades and all of this. Down there, they're going to the voters for that every year, every four years, four to six on the Capitol, right? So. You know, we might think that way over time, that we could develop a, a cycle like that here, so I'm not saying we, I, I don't think a sixty million dollar referendum would pass Mozeney, okay?
No, I know.
But we're not even, yeah, no, go ahead.
And so if we are serving for up to thirty million and we end up coming to them, and think about this, if we then, when we come to referendum, we're coming for only seventeen or eighteen million, it gives us an opportunity, it gives the board an opportunity in four or six more years to say, to already know that the public was willing to do thirty million maybe in twenty twenty-four, we only did seventeen, maybe we can come for twenty-three or twenty-four, the next go-around in just four or six years and have this perpetual cycle, because when we eventually, I think we're gonna go to referendum this November, I do, um, for whatever we decide. It's not only the board that has to sell it, it's not the administration, we're gonna need a yes committee.
Yes.
It has to be put together by municipal leaders and small business leaders and parents, right?
Parents, yeah.
And board members, because it's our responsibility, because we're the elected leaders.
Correct.
We're gonna ask them, we have to be involved, and we need to be of close to like mind.
And how does the strategic plan fit into this? We don't wanna eliminate ourselves and then we go through strategic planning with our community and, well, we can't do that because we're about to go for a referendum and we didn't think about that and we don't have enough money for it, so, I, I don't know what the right answer is. Maybe the right answer is we shouldn't do it in November, we should do it in April, but I know, November's the right time to do it.
Well, not, not according to that.
I know, November's the right time to do it, I just don't know that we're gonna be prepared.
I was surprised.
Yes, I know.
Right? Oh, you're saying you don't think we'll be.
I don't know, I mean, we're two weeks away, we haven't answered anything.
We have to cooperate, we have a special meeting very soon, maybe.
That's what I think too.
Oh, within.
Really getting to depth of all this.
And just talk the board all of this, yeah. Because we do have other, a lot of other things on the agenda for tonight, it's already.
Yeah, I'm already getting it.
Let's go to midnight now, get my.
Kelly's getting tired here.
I think, and just do the, yeah, everyone get on the same page of what do you think we should, we should be adding.
Cause this is our second, really.
But should school perceptions be with us, I'm thinking, yes.
Yes, yes, of course, yes.
Well, and I understand why they're trying to put something like this together as well, cause they know the public's gonna wanna read it and not go into depth.
Yeah.
But I mean, some of the things that could be added, the recommended plan, you know, build a new high school caf, kitchen cafeteria, well, how old is, are existing, you know, the lockers.
Well, and we're sitting here telling our community that enrollment is down, but yet we need more.
Right, why, why do we wanna improve our tech ed to attract more students?
So why?
Yes.
You know, some of these things can be really easy just to implement, just a few choice words.
Does the public know what the term tech ed means, or is it only school people who know?
I think so. Why?
Really, Peter?
I don't know.
Yeah, I would think so.
I knew what I was back in.
Okay, so.
But what if you don't have kids in high school?
Yeah, there are people who don't.
Well, they'll get there, no, no, no.
Yeah, let's.
Okay.
By what date? Let's just.
So.
Can I call a question?
No.
No, because.
Is somebody making a motion to go?
Do not.
Motion to postpone to a special meeting.
So much left, so what's the timeframe that they need to have this back by to, to make changes?
March fifth is up for me.
Well, look, we were, weren't we going to have another meeting on next Tuesday, and then that one was done away with, so why don't we try to, you know, for that?
So Monday and Tuesday next week?
Well, the twenty-seventh, yeah.
That's what we kinda have canceled in anyway.
No, I know. It's already still on my calendar.
If available for some.
Yeah, I actually still have it on my calendar as well.
Yeah, just leave it.
I just left spend it with you guys, but sure, we can do that.
So next Tuesday, so I guess can we check with Darren at school perceptions and see if he can.
We'll do.
Be here?
Next Tuesday.
Okay, so we'll just leave it up, we don't need to do anything with that right now. So move.
Twenty-six written down.
So what's going to happen between now and then?
That's a good question. Administration, Michelle, Steve and I will meet with Darren on Thursday.
Of this week.
And similar to the last conversation, I will have Christie, we'll send, you'll hear the feedback, that'll be helpful, I believe.
Yes.
And then, uh, and then schedule, if that's the direction of the board, to have a committee of, of the whole to develop the survey, we would then set up a meeting as soon as possible, um, to continue with this conversation.
Could I, I would like to hear from lame duck Amy, what she thinks about all this.
Lame duck.
She's gonna be on the sales team.
Yes.
She has nothing else to do, so she's gonna head that committee.
Well, like I was telling Diane personally here when you guys were acting, I think that maybe we should give her, we should email either her or Rob some of our ideas so that when we meet next week, Tuesday, they can already be.
Shouldn't it be done before Thursday when they have their meeting? So basically tomorrow, whatever you want them to know, we have to get it to them.
Cause otherwise, it's like, now you're gonna waste more days because, you know what I mean?
No, I under, I agree, yes, I do.
Right.
Give them our ideas so that you got it.
They need to listen to this, a lot of ideas were thrown out in this meeting, listen to this meeting, I thought the last meeting was pretty clear.
It's a good idea. It's a really good idea.
And we'll draw Kelly to type it all up.
Yeah.
Remember all that? No, that's, that's.
I'm putting in my stupid.
So we're sending it all to Kelly?
No, no, I would say to Rob.
You might as well just sleep here next week, Kelly.
I would say to Rob.
Okay.
I'll see what I got.
Okay, everybody have that, so next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, do we have a time?
I would say six.
Six. That doesn't work.
So Rob, do you wanna send us all an email?
Oh, so.
And tell us to reply to you with ideas?
Good question, I will work with Amy tomorrow on communicating with the board and getting out a doc, uh, to gather input, yes, yeah, we'll work on that, you know, tomorrow.
Okay.
A living, breathing doc.
That way we can all be seeing each other's comments.
Perfect. Amy, that time doesn't work?
She'd prefer earlier, earlier.
So would Kelly.
Like thirty?
Why throw my name in?
Oh, did we say time, what time?
We didn't say, we were saying six, but.
But I prefer.
You don't have to run.
Well, why don't we?
We'll, we'll survey the board as well.
Yeah.
Just for times, okay?
Yeah, survey, get out a survey, time, so we'll shoot for the twenty-seventh, we'll have a couple of backups to look at as well.
Why don't you just carry over for Monday?
Good, yes.
Okay, all right, and we need new action on that, so we're gonna move on to item fourteen, A, new business discussion and possible decision on the current school re, uh, school resource officer contract and approval of. and approval of the additional school resource officer contract.
So there've been ongoing conversations with the city on the contract for our existing SRO and then for potential future school resource officers. And so really, we're looking for approval for the SRO contract as presented.
So I, in this contract, and I know I've already asked Michelle some questions via email, but in this current contract, I don't see where it states that should a school resource officer whether differentiates or specifies if, if one is injured while on duty with the school or with the city, that they're compensated from either the school or the city. That, that amendment needs to be in here.
Michelle, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, in talking to Mr. Gates about this last week, he said that the city would put together a side letter of agreement stating that. Because to him, the contract, he would not charge us that anyway, and he said that he would put a side letter of agreement stating who was responsible for what. And that if a, I'll just read what I had sent to Jessica today. City is putting together a side letter of agreement stating the following, the wording may be different, but it's gonna have this meaning. The school district will be responsible for wages and benefits above any worker's comp or disability benefits when the SRO is injured on the job with the district. So the officer would be receiving worker comp or disability, anything above that, if they were injured on the job with the school district, the district would reimburse. The city will be responsible for wages and benefits for the officer when on leave due to an on-the-job injury with the city. The school district will be responsible for payment for leave taken during the school year, excluding workers' comp or disability leave taken due to an injury with the city. The city will be responsible for payment for leave during the summer. I see this agreement as favorable to the district as the majority of vacation leave will be taken during the summer. If you prorated it, the SRO would be working for the school district nine months out of twelve, seventy-five percent of the time, working for the city twenty-five percent of the time. But Mr. Gates will put together a letter, I don't think that would.
Absolutely, but I would recommend that we don't sign or agree to it until we get that amended contract language. I won't support it until I see that, that finalized amendment. But I agree with.
So you, okay.
What, what amendment should be agreement? Absolutely, yes.
Not a side letter?
It says we're meeting next Tuesday, could we bring that back? Could you have it done by then?
I, I can, I'll ask.
And add it to, okay.
And then I have a question regarding the expense stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so this is what the old one was, now go to the new one. See, it says psychological exam six hundred.
Yes.
Okay, go to the new one.
That's twelve hundred, right?
Well, that's what they have.
Yeah, that's what they have.
It says.
No.
It says twelve thousand.
It's last page.
Yeah, it does say twelve thousand.
Is it, which one is it in?
It's the last page in.
It'd be the last page probably of that document, is that open?
It is, it's the very last page.
And granted, some of them they multiplied, right? Two body cameras, two tapers.
Right.
But some of the stuff wasn't on.
They could go to the very bottom there.
Watch, monitor vests.
Well, there it says twelve thousand, so on the first one for twenty twenty-three, it was six hundred, and now it's twelve thousand? Is that comma in the wrong spot? Should that be twelve hundred?
Hundred, that's what, that's what I have.
Good question, yeah. I will find out.
Okay, and then also with the body camera, now this is kinda going backwards, but did the body camera price come down? Because for one last year, it was twenty-five hundred, and now they're saying it's twenty-five hundred for two. I just want accurate numbers.
Went from twenty-five hundred to five thousand, and this one's not.
Right. Right.
Yeah, we could find that out.
Right, and then there's a litany of things, yeah. Whole crap of new things.
Tough hook monitor vests, helmets.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So what is the city really funding?
I think you, Jess, that's what I thought.
I mean, they added about thirty, over thirty thousand dollars worth of costs.
I know.
Yeah. Why?
And then I thought the same thing.
That's what we were talking about.
Yep, exactly.
I think it needs to be looked at.
That's what many of us are wondering.
And I'd be happy to meet with chief just to get the perspective. I'm, I'm thinking updated safety gear, better gear, that's part of the conversation.
Absolutely, but, but why, why doesn't the city have more of an onus in this?
Yes.
And to your point, and thank you for saying that, Mr. Way.
You're welcome.
Going forward, I think Chief Graham should be involved in every single MOU conversation and email so that he, he is the expert, he's the law enforcement expert. So I think that he should absolutely be a part of all of this going forward.
I mean, I, I'm in favor of the school district paying up the lion's share of the expenses, frankly.
Sure, yes.
The townships, you know, benefit from this.
Right.
And the townships have no responsibility for paying for officers in the city, yet the, the townships, parents and students and community all benefit from this, right?
And services, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
So I have no problem, I, I, I agree with what you just said, what are they paying for?
Yeah.
Because this, this, neither one of these documents even have anything to do with the salaries and benefits.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's a good way to go.
So that's yet a whole other issue, right?
Yep.
A whole additional cost.
Correct, correct, yep. And correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but we had asked Mr. Gates to come and participate in the meeting, but he was not able to attend to, to explain.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And another add-on too is I believe Chief Graham's had to put this together.
Okay.
My correspondence, that's what I.
True, that was my impression, thank you for the clarification.
Right, so I guess the, the other question then, back in for the twenty twenty-three and the new costs, so what of these, were these already expensed in and already had the city covered? And now they're bringing that back to the school district to cover for this year? So I guess we can ask the difference of why from twenty twenty-three to this year with all of these new items added?
How come they're not paying for any of it?
Well, that's what.
You know, I'm.
That's the question.
Yes. Steve?
That they're gonna use in their community, in the city only.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
You had the answer? No?
Well, I just wanna, I hate to interject, but because I've been in the safety committee and we had this discussion, I think, I just wanna make sure I'm clear myself as well. But remember the expenses that we're incurring here, it's come out of a funded function, which is, which is taxed on all people in our district. So it's not just the city paying for it, everybody is paying for this, who pays tax here too? So it's a shared cost on all townships as well.
Absolutely.
Right, so, I mean, just so we're clear, it's just not the district paying out the fund, it's a funded eighty function.
Yep.
That's right.
Absolutely.
But it's still a fun eighty out of the school district.
Yes, well, we love it for funded eighties though.
Yeah, you can go back towards Justin's age, yes.
Yes.
But, but, the other twenty-five percent of the time, when, when they belong to the city and they're on patrol
Right.
or during the evenings after school hours or, or on the weekends, when they're trying to maintain their currency as well,
Right.
they're gonna be utilizing all of this equipment.
Yes, they are, hundred percent.
They're like saying.
This year, they're just gonna have a notice and sales.
Yes, it's, it's a give and take, and the chief mentioned two as well.
Completely awesome.
Yes. Yes.
Every sudden meeting, remember people, if I have to pull these offices for an event, they're gonna be pulled.
Absolutely.
Right.
So, it's not like they're locked in for hours.
Right, exactly.
So, we understand that, because who knows what could happen, but I just wanted to make sure we're clear with that.
Yeah, no.
No, that is, yeah.
Absolutely, thank you for that, yeah, okay.
And an update on the timeline as well, the city approved this last week, I believe, so it'll have to go before the city in March.
Okay.
So we gotta get that.
So you think we can get this back on there for next Tuesday?
So did the ci- so did the city ask the question about why did the cost of the exams go from six hundred or to twelve thousand?
To twelve thousand, yeah.
I believe when, I know initially when the city approved this, they were under the understanding with that cost share, that they were not picking up those expenses for the equipment.
Got it, okay.
I don't know this one.
All right, we'll push that one to Tuesday then. All right, item fourteen B, discussion and possible decision, approval of revision for policy, two one, two, three, one, two, class size.
So class size policy looks at both suggested range and class size goal range. And it's the administration's recommendation to keep to the suggested range, but just take off the verbiage on class size goal. That will give us a little more flexibility with our staffing and, and we talked about projected budget deficit for next year, looking at that. So in red, asking that just to not be in the policy. And the, the why behind that, it gives administration more flexibility in designing our staffing plan. So that's asking for your consideration on that.
Are you making a motion, Kelly?
Make a motion to approve the policy change?
Okay.
Leave it at that first, I do have a statement.
Okay, so we have a motion by Kevin, is your second?
I'll second it.
A second by Kelly.
So I made the motion because I believe in the process.
Mm-hmm.
Motion, second, first, then discussion. Do not misinterpret my motion to approve as support for the motion, let me stipulate that. For at least since nineteen ninety-two, when I first got on a school board here in Mozzanee, we have heard nonstop from administrators, no one, none of you were here then. Well, you might have been, but you weren't to this part. And at conferences and in trade journals and from WASB, that smaller class sizes are better for kids. What happened? That now it's not the case?
They still are. My opinion.
I agree. Well, my question is.
I'm just trying to understand.
I, I think that this probably could be true if you had a class full of all really well-behaved students, but what happens when you don't, which seems like, right now, there's a lot of that, a lot of that.
Yeah, when I read that, I was like, whoa, I'm married to a teacher, I was gonna ask her for her opinion, but I knew I didn't need to. I, I couldn't believe it when I read that.
I've done either.
Nope. Smaller class sizes are better.
Well, again, it's.
It's a goal.
Right, it's giving, like Rob's stating, it's giving the admin the range. It's not, you're not saying that you're asking for larger or smaller class sizes, they're just removing, you still have that goal.
You're just removing the mid-range.
Right.
So are you telling me that this has nothing to do with the referendum discussion earlier about operating expenditures going forward? Because we maybe have to consolidate classes and that type, is that?
Well, that's one, if you look at some of the questions that are in there, some, it is, some of those questions are relating to the cuts.
So are we getting ahead of the refer- the survey and the referendum by changing the policy?
Are we changing it or are we just eliminating verbiage?
We're just taking out what's in.
Right, we're not really changing it, that's what I'm saying.
We're not changing the policy, except for take, removing.
We're just removing a goal.
And I understand, I mean, policies, the board changes, the board decides to pivot away from what our policy is every now and then anyway.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'll call a question.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for finishing that.
Administration recommended, that's why I supported it.
Yep. All right, moving on to other reports, WASB.
Okay, that would be me, in February, uh, when is that school law conference? Yes, I'm thinking it was the twenty-ninth, all right. Yes, at the Hilton in Appleton, I believe two of our board members, just Megan and Calandra are going. And it is, a session following, a lot of, what is it, Megan and the lawyers, is that what it is? Law, thank you. Yeah, we have things. On law, so.
Title nine in that.
Okay, title nine in that, yeah, it doesn't say that, and that's all I have.
Okay, and then I did even on you guys, if you wanted to put something together, I'm working on something too to get to Rob in the admin from state convention, anything you wanna share?
Yeah.
And share with the rest of us, that'd be great.
That's what I was also thinking, you know, next year, we should plan out who's going to what. So because there's so many of them that I, I checked to see like, oh, are they gonna record that? Because I, I wanna go to this one, but I also wanna do this one at the same time, right? So if we, you know, maybe planned a little bit better, like what are you going to, can you report back? I'll go to this one and I can report back, you know, if there's.
Keep in mind on the app, when you go down and you click into the session, they have the handles already in each of those.
Some of them, some of them I can't find though, and I'm kinda like.
You can still go back. But many of them have it. But I know like for me personally, when I came back that week, I already was firing off emails and disseminating a lot of the stuff that I had done to the administration to say, here's, here's a thought for consideration.
Got it, okay, thank you. Item fifteen B, CISA nine, Donna?
Yes, there were several shout-outs for the different school districts. Anago was kind of interesting, they had their first ever open, tech ed, open house and career days. Wasawest is working with the city to build boat landing kegs for the city. What do you call, there's a new hire, Le- Leanne Gunther as a program assistant. So their, their staff is increasing quite, quite a lot. There is Stratford School District. The students are doing good, good looking, building, building dog houses for the Martin County K-nine program. And the building materials have been donated by local businesses, which we thought was kind of an interesting project, you know, for our students even. And, let's see, I thought there was one. And some of the staff have been doing shout-outs and doing programs for the communities to let the communities know what CISA nine really is and what the Cisas do for our school districts. So that, that was some of the highlights of the report.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, future agenda items, anybody want to bring something forward for March?
Um, I already communicated with the two of you, and my understanding is I think we would need to probably make a decision in March. Being, thinking about forward-thinking, the opportunity for us to join like the lacrosse co-op. I do know that we have some students in the high school that would like to be part of that. And there is a significant number of students in the middle school that are involved with lacrosse. There was a, like a training seminar yet Monday or this weekend at DC Everest, and more than half of the players there were from our district. As we think about revenue sources, and my understanding is we would have an option to get into the co-op if we would approve it as a board in March, so I guess I would ask, that's my request, that you continue to pursue that. Okay.
Okay.
Will do, thank you.
Anybody else? Nope.
I'll make a motion if you want to close session.
Good, a motion by Kevin is your second, a second by Kelly. Roll call, please.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Calandra, you go?
Yes.
Kelly, you go?
Yes.
Bomman?
Yes.
Foreman?[1789.92]